Okay, do it now. The mic, the mic was off.
Okay. Sorry, so I think we probably haven't heard what I've been saying so far. I think we had a technical problem on our side. I just read the notes at the beginning of the meeting. So just to say that we are under the Alaska Meetings Act and as both found in Basque statute, Blask and Anchorage Ministerial Code, we're also operating under our topic meeting standards of conduct. I called the meeting to order at seven oh one and we started roll call. And I repeat that for the purposes of everyone to know. Mike Edgington, co-chair, land use supervisor.
Brianna Sullivan, co-chair, Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor.
And Amanda?
Amanda Sassy, Roads and Utilities Supervisor.
Jennifer?
Jennifer Wingard, Public Safety Supervisor.
Good guy. Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Excellent. So we have a forum. Does anybody have any disclosures? Tonight's agenda. I'm wondering, Jennifer, if item number 12 might be something you want to mention.
Oops, yes, yes, thank you.
Do you want to state your record?
No, I need a moment, sorry. I don't, I can't scroll, sorry. I only have one computer right now.
Item 12 is the State Senate redistricting, but I will hand the chair over to Brianna temporarily because I have a disclosure.
Okay.
Okay.
I have the chair for now and Mike, go ahead.
Item number eight, resolution to support the Girdwood Health Clinic Phase Two modification. My spouse is on the board of directors for the health clinic.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I know that that has been disclosed in previous meetings when the health clinic is on the agenda item and I don't rule that that is a conflict this evening for that discussion. Mike, you can have the chair back for the next one.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, please.
Yeah, sorry about the delay there, guys. Yes, Mike is correct. I do have a problem on this with being a litigant in the lawsuit on, under item 12.
Okay. I think my ruling is, under the circumstances, if we were going to vote on anything, it probably would not be appropriate for you to vote. However, as one of the experts on the topic, it is probably reasonable for you to answer any questions or provide any information. So I would not ask you to leave the meeting during that item, but not vote on anything if we choose to vote.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. We have agenda revisions and approval. Does anyone like to move to agenda?
This is Brianna, I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay, I hear a second.
I'll second, this is Amanda Sassy.
Thank you. Any objection or request for amendment? Okay, not hearing any, I'll treat that as consent and move forwards. April 5th, 2022, special meeting minutes. Anyone like to, I'd like to say in a motion to approve those agenda, approve that minutes.
This is Guy, I'd like to approve the April 5th special meeting minutes.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Brianna?
Thank you. Again, any objection to accepting those minutes? Okay, not hearing any objection, that passes by unanimous consent. Item, next item is the April 25th regular meeting minutes approval. Say motion, pass those minutes.
I'll move, this is Brianna.
Thank you. Anyone seconding?
I'll second.
Thank you, Guy. And again, any objections? Hearing any objections, they're passed. And the last one is the May 4th GBOS special meeting minutes approval. Entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved, this is Brianna.
Thank you, Brianna, a second?
I'll second, this is Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Again, any objections? Okay, not hearing objections, we approve those minutes as well. All right, now we'll move on to announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand, either in person or virtually, and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the order of another members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. There is a change in the schedule for the Girdwood Transfer Station as of June the first. They will be open Monday, Friday and Saturday, nine thirty till five, and close Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Sundays. The difference is they will be closing Sunday from June 1st onwards. The meeting between GBOS and the municipality, quarterly meeting, has been rescheduled for May the 23rd at four PM as a hybrid meeting. So that will be both in the Girdwood Community Room and online via Teams. And there's also a registration link for a free dump pass, which is available through the agenda. Okay. Introductions, presentations and reports. We'll start with an update on the GBOS co-chairs' roles for 2022. Kyle, do you want to just report on that or I can?
Sure. GBOS had a meeting just previous to this one, a special meeting to determine roles. It's an annual thing after the spring election. And retaining the chairship or the co-chairship is Brianna Sullivan and Mike Edgington. And then, as for the supervisor roles, Amanda Sassy will be the Public Safety Supervisor, Roads and Utility will be Jennifer Wingard, Fire Department will be Guy Wade, Land Use will be Mike Edgington, and Brianna Sullivan will fill the supervising role for Parks and Rec and Cemetery.
Thank you, Kyle. Not seeing any comments, we'll move on. Update, housing developments in Girdwood, including Holden Hills. We've received a lot of comments from both businesses and other organizations and individuals in the community with concern about the Holden Hills proposal as it currently stands. This came up briefly in Land Use meeting as well last week. And I think the, at least one of the suggestions from Land Use is we could have a joint meeting, perhaps in the form of a town hall or perhaps in the form of a normal meeting. And I'd like to have that discussion with the board as well today. So any thoughts on that? This is obviously a major topic of concern to the community.
This is Brianna, I agree that we could have a joint meeting with Land Use and not during either of our board's normal times or days to have a similar town hall meeting, but with Land Use and GBOS to discuss the housing issues and developments in Girdwood.
Yeah, listen, Guy. Comment on it?
Yeah, please.
No, I support that. I think that Land Use gets a different core, you know, attendees and I think it'd be great to bring them all together and have this discussion as community.
Okay, so we'll have to schedule something and publicize it. The, I think we, there was a question which came up last week about the status of the development agreement. Kyle, did you find out what the status was?
I did, and it was just confirmed that agreement has been signed. Yep.
Is that document in the public?
I don't know, I would have to ask HLB.
That'd be useful to know what the parameters are.
I will ask.
Okay, thank you. And then, this is not going to be discussed at any, the HLP Advisory Commission this month, and I have not, although I have not seen an agenda for it this month. It's next week, isn't it?
I checked their website and did not see an agenda.
Okay. But my understanding is it's not going to be discussed this month. So we have a few weeks to schedule something. My recommendation would be sometime early, middle of next month.
Okay. For the joint meeting with LUC?
Joint meeting with LUC. And I think it'll probably be in the start of town hall. Okay. Any other comments from board members? Seeing any hands, if either of you who are online have something to say, speak up. Okay, any other comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Thank you. So we will publicize, so we're going to have basically a joint meeting of LUC and GBOS in the form of town hall sometime early in June. We will publicize that and make sure we get the word out through normal channels and maybe some extra channels. I think that's going to be an interesting and useful discussion for the community. Okay, item number three, update on the Girdwood Trans Plan. And I see Carolyn is on. Can you give us an update on where the trans plan currently stands?
Hi, I can. This is Carolyn Rodine, Chair of Trails Committee. We are making some very slow progress, but some steady progress. Just for a brief recap on where we got to where we are now, the trail plan draft that the subcommittee had worked on with Huddle AK went out to the public and then took in 2,000 comments, I believe. Kyle and Holly went through those comments and made suggested changes to the plan based on the comments. It went back to Trails Committee at that time. We discussed and voted on all 35 suggested changes. And I do want to say that, right from the very beginning, there was people who said, well, what if our proposed changes aren't listed on the ones that were put together by staff? And it was decided that we would just only talk about the specific changes in front of us and then people would have a chance to make other changes. So we did go through the plan, put all those in, another red line came out and we, Trails Committee voted on it and it was not accepted. So we had a specific date, that January 18th, I believe, was the date that any other proposed changes could be brought forward to Trails Committee. There ended up being, I think it's 45 of them. We have been working, including special meetings, starting, I think, March 1st. And we're at amendment number seven. We've only gone through six. Very slow process trying to reach agreement. There's just so much discussion at each of the meetings. We usually get through maybe one or less than one per meeting. That's where we are now.
Okay, thank you. So, so at that, I mean, are these, have you been dealing with the most sort of extensive and slow items so far? Or do you expect that rate to be similar as you go forward with the other 49, 39?
Some of them are going to be fast. We have, you know, coming up is our, what is kind of the heart of the whole plan, discussion and about the primitive trail areas, which were originally called natural spaces, but the definition was changed with the first round of proposed changes to primitive trail areas. And there is a vote coming up whether to take those off the plan and that's going to be a very significant vote and discussion, you know. I think it'll be at our May 24th meeting. Many of the ones after that are very small, were actually, some of them are more just editing of the plan and pointing things out, so they won't be nearly as, as big as some of the big ones. Or time consuming.
Okay, so I mean, just to get a sense of time, when would you expect to be done with that set of initial amendments and then have the draft, I'm ready again with the community?
I think part of that has to do with if we, it hadn't been decided for sure if we're going to try to have a couple more special meetings in June. We're not having a real Trails meeting that month because we're going to do a work party instead, but with or without that, I think we just need a, probably, maybe, I think once we get through some of the big ones, I think we only need maybe four or five, four meetings, maybe. That might be being optimistic.
So that's, you're talking three or four months? I'm just trying to get a sense of time schedule.
Yeah, thank you. Possibly because we are taking July off.
Right, okay.
So, and then we're planning to start right back in the beginning of August. Probably realistically, three months.
Okay.
Three to four.
Thank you for that update. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Carolyn, this is Brianna. I know you've had a lot of explaining to do for what's happened and transpired over the last several months. My concern would be that usually Trails takes a break during the summertime and as do many people that love the outdoors and are not in school schedule, may not attend these meetings and would rather work on trails and participate in summer activities. So the, the participation in the subjects you said were big items coming up that were supposed to have already happened, where those attendees came to the meeting hoping to vote, has now been pushed back. So I don't know how the, the participation would, would go for another special meeting this month. So I'm concerned about that or progress.
I totally agree. I'm very concerned. There's been so much back and forth discussion. Half the people I talked to think we should have, you know, a couple special meetings in June. Other people say no, it's, it's, you know, everybody's too busy and out doing stuff. And we are having the one, May 24th. I did want to do that because we didn't get to discuss it at all at our regular Trails Committee meeting because we didn't have our parliamentarian. As most of you know, our meetings, we spend an awful lot of time discussing process and such rather than the actual plan. And so it's been very helpful to have a parliamentarian and I really didn't want to run a meeting without one. And so we didn't get to discuss it at all. And so I wanted to have this May 24th meeting, but I agree, that's why we don't have a date, any date set for June. And I'm not sure I personally could attend, but that'd be fine, somebody else can run a meeting.
Okay, Amanda?
Thank you, and thank you Carolyn for all your hard work. I really appreciate it and know it seems pretty thankless sometimes. I am wondering, what time is the special meeting at on the 24th?
On 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Jennifer? Sorry, unless you had something else, Amanda, I'm not sure. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that, sorry, I gotta put my hand down.
Sorry, Jennifer?
Thank you, Carolyn, for all your work. I know this has just been a journey and as well to, for so many people who have contributed on the trails. I just kind of, just want to ask, I just want to throw out that whether or not there would be any value, excuse me, in the, in the community, being able to vote on the red line plan. I understand Trails decision about it, but that argument could also be made that the Trails process is taking an extraordinary time and that ultimately this is community decision, not just Trails decision. So wouldn't it be useful to know what the community thinks of the red line plan?
It is going to come back to the community. We definitely have that in the, in our plan for, after going through these proposed changes we're doing right now. The whole process got a little confusing when it came to Trails Committee a little bit earlier than it was going to, but yeah, it's, yep, I agree, but it is going to go back out to the public again, to the general public.
Thank you, Amanda.
Um, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I think that the red line plan is, it was voted down, correct? And so that it's not a thing that we would be voting on.
Right, no.
No, that's not something we can take to the public and to the community to vote on from here.
Not the current one. After we go through these, this next round of proposed changes, then it's going to go back out to the public for another, any more public comment since it then needs to go back out to the public, you know, from Trails Committee, yeah.
Thank you.
Really?
Carolyn, this is Brianna. I do have one question for you as Chair. Would it be helpful to be able to limit the number of special meetings so that staff resources are not being used and the people attending the meetings can just assume that there will be another special meeting if time is taken up in, in the time allotted for regular meetings?
You mean, rather than have special meetings, have it only at Trails Committee meetings?
Well, yes, or limit the number of special meetings that keep being added.
Right, we want to have a firm, we want to set it up. I mean, right now, the biggest question is June, but starting in July, we were planning to have it like set, like we'll talk to, at the Trails Committee meeting and then one special meeting or whatever. Yeah. Is that what you mean? Have it all set up ahead of time?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Again, thanks for all your work on this, Carolyn. Is there anything you think that would be helpful, either support or anything else from us as a board?
I wish there was. The parliamentarian is a huge help. But I don't know, I just feel like we're, we've gotten the middle of this and I'm not sure how we can, we're just, we're, I feel like we just have to keep plodding forward on the path we're on now, because we are on a path with an end. And I, I feel so bad for people that it's so painfully slow. But man, are people strong minded and we just, a lot of, it's hard to even get to a vote at a meeting. Anyway.
I think it's clear there's a lot of passion in this topic. Any other questions from the board? If not, any questions from the public? Questions are coming from public? Please, if you want to.
That's okay. I would like to ask the board to look at the red line plan and consider passing it or if it needs to be passed by the general public, sending it to the general public for a couple reasons. One, I think it best represents real community input and feedback and everything we've done since then has taken us away from. The other reason, that's reason number one. Reason number two, as Carolyn was, was stating, just sheer time. This is going, she's very optimistic, three months, this could drag on forever. It has gone on for, is it two years yet or nearly a year and a half? It's been a long time. And the red line version really had a lot of, enormous amount of community feedback, community input. It represented a good consensus position and was really shot down by a small group that didn't get something they wanted or were reluctant to see others get something they, we've been stuck on the issue of, first it was natural spaces, now we're stuck on areas of primitive trails. Over and over, we voted in reservation for these areas in one form or another. Over and over, people have found new proposals to take that away. What she was describing as the, the hardest proposals coming up are essentially proposals that we've already voted down. And then there was, we voted on very similar proposals already in the red line plan. And people have insisted on more time for public feedback. The people who had more input than anyone else have put forth more amendments than everyone. That's for most of the amendments, these are the same people making the same proposals that we voted down. With added time to send out more emails, to get more people agitated, to vote against reservation, et cetera. Lengthening the process, it's not getting us more community representation, community feedback. We really peaked with the red line plan, the red line trail plan. And when I say it was a good consensus version, I don't mean that I got everything I wanted. I didn't, you know, I, I was outvoted on plenty of issues. The overall plan is a very solid plan. It's a very good compromise. It has a lot for everyone. Current proposals will take away everything from one user group. There will be nothing allowed for primitive trail users. That's, those are the proposals we're voting on in the coming meetings. There's, you know, that is, that's the meat of the problem here. No one's proposing we take everything from bikers or Nordic skiers that they should have nowhere to set aside. The red line trail plan was a good version. It was a good consensus. It deserves to be directly voted in or to be sent out to the community to be voted on. And I hope you get a look at it and consider exactly that.
I have a clarifying question. When you said the red line plan, do you mean the plan, the, the version that was voted up or down by the, that was voted down in the end by the Trails Committee?
Yes.
So it was after the staff, the consolidated public feedback was incorporated by staff and the Trails Plan or the Trails Group voted up or down in individual parts?
Yes, there was very confusing process. Everything in there has been voted in. And then, so when every single proposal was voted on, nothing is in there unless it got a majority vote. And then there was a push to vote out the plan.
Right. So it's, it's sort of the draft plan as amended. The original draft plan that went out to the public as amended had the up or down vote and you're talking about the documents at that point?
Yes, sir.
Understood, thank you. Other, any questions, yes?
I just, I guess I don't know the process. When you say voted in by the community, what does that look like? Is that, are we talking about an election?
The, the specific proposals that were voted in?
No, just if, like you say, if a vote by the community to accept the red line, if we needed to go there or make a final acceptance or rejection. No, just if, like you say, if a vote by the community to accept the red line, if we needed to go there or make a final acceptance or reject it. Does that, is that like a public vote or what, what's that look like?
I was under the impression that the board could vote it in, but just in this meeting, I'm hearing so much reference to sending it out to the public for a vote, if that's what the final plan needs. And I might here perceive the community impression that the board could vote it in. I don't mean here now, but the board could vote it in.
So that's what you're referencing when you said the community, the community goes to the board?
Well, no, I would say if the board has the power, if that's how you choose to proceed, that I would strongly urge that. If I heard other people speaking about sending it back out, um, for a last round of community feedback, larger vote. And so I don't know what people are referring to when they say that, that. But if, if that's what's needed, I think the red line would be the better, the best version to go on.
I'm a little confused on that myself.
So I'll just describe the process for approval right now. So uh, after staff edits and we got approvals up and down on if people accept the staff edits or not, we created a red line document. We presented that red line document to GTC. And, uh, what we needed from GTC was to accept the document as a whole. At that point in time, the GTC voted against the red line document as a whole. It didn't mean they voted down what was approved for the individual amendments, but overall GTC, the people in the room that night, uh, did not approve the document overall because there was people who wanted more changes in there. So at this point in time, the red line document has not been approved. And I think what Jonathan's asking is can the board, uh, move that red line document forward? What that would do, that would cut out having advisory approval from GTC and also land use, which right now the path is that here would Trails Committee would approve it. We would take the land use for review, get their approval. And that way the board supervisors has two layers of community approval for you to consider before you send this on to Anchorage for the planning department to enact. Because once it goes to Anchorage, then it has to go before the Herage Land Bank Advisory Commission. And then it goes to, I believe, uh, Planning and Zoning, believe, uh, or one of the commissions up there and then on to the assembly for adoption. So if the board was to, uh, vote for the red line right now, then you would just skip the steps of having approval coming up from GTC and LEC.
Okay, uh, any other comments from board or the public? Deborah, please go ahead.
Hi, um, well, I have to, I, I, um, echo what Jonathan said and for many reasons. And I'll just try to be really concise and brief about this. And as Kyle mentioned also, the process, so, um, it just seems like it's this right thing and the smartest and the proactive thing to do is GBOS just go ahead and, not just, but go ahead and approve what came after the public had the process of looking at it. The staff put the amendments in and we went back and we looked at it and the reason why it was voted down is because of exactly what Jonathan pointed out was that a few, like three people did not like it and wrote 45 amendments to it. And that's where it got convoluted. And that's why we had to get a parliamentarian. And that's why we're paying way more than $77,000 that we originally paid for. And I just feel like this, um, I think it's a great concern that Brianna brings up of like, well, when, that it is a concern, how long is this going to go? And of course, summer being an optimal time for people not to be, uh, attending meetings. But really, at the same time, there's never a good time to, uh, attend meetings from my perspective. I mean, I have things going on in the fall and the winter and summer. So, um, I feel that at this time, when it, it, uh, going back out to the public to look at it is a, a critical, um, point and really would make this, um, frustration and this, um, clarity move so much forward. And to get backlash from, from, and blaming the GTC for it is, I think, um, not really taking the meat of what is going on here, um, and why this is coming back. And there, and what I'm saying to people is when I see them out, out and about is like, for the first time in over 20 years, I tell people, don't come to the Trails meeting anymore. That's an embarrassment for me to say that. An embarrassment for me as a community member and one of the founding members of the Gilbert Trails Committee to say that. I'm just telling them, just wait until the plan comes up and then look at it. Because what is going to come out after these meetings that were scheduled for is 100% plus completely different than what the public saw last July. Meaning one, I'm going to conclude here now, one is the language, the trails, um, the language particularly, the actual trails, most of them are taken out, some, and most of them are put back in, things that are just like bizarre. It's not what they have saw just a few months ago. It's completely changed. It would be a dramatically different trails plan that the community spent some, including the Trails community, community, uh, excuse me, committee and the subcommittee that put in all this hours and months before that sent it out to the public. Now we're just going in circles and, um, it's frustrating. It's frustrating for all the community members. And I feel like that, that red line trail plan that came out. And even before that, I was not happy with all of the, um, the plan that first came out. And then even after the staff came in and compromised and changed some wordings and added some things and such, I still wasn't totally happy. There has to be a compromise and that red line plan is a compromise. And nobody, no matter how much bullying is going to be happening, community time wasted and angst going on is going to get, um, rallied behind this.
Thanks, Deborah.
I'm disappointed and I just really, I think that the board supervisors does have the, um, authority and the will and the, the right to go ahead with just, not, I don't mean to say just, but go ahead and accept this. And this part about going to like, well, it won't go through, um, land use. I mean, you guys have changed this protocol so many times already. And it's not even your protocol now. To go through certain committees before it comes to GBOS. Not only not, does it not go, need to go through committees, you don't need, you've already taken out the old business of the new business protocol. Thank you for listening to me. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to rant. I just really wanted to echo that. I think it, it's the first time I actually I haven't even thought of it, but I think it's a great idea.
Thanks, Deborah. Um, so, I mean, yeah, obviously, one thing that's changed since that original vote is, uh, the scope of the rework has become a lot more obvious. So I guess I have a question for Carolyn and then we'll come to Shannon. So my question for you, Carolyn, is, um, given that you know a lot more about what work would be involved in going through this process of looking at the other 45 items or looking at the remaining 39 out of the 45. That's adding a lot more time. And I think the can, my sense was the concern at the beginning would be, uh, or the, the thought at the beginning would be, it'd be a relatively quick process to, uh, to make changes. So do you think the, um, the Trails Committee, if they had a, if they had the option to answer this question about whether we should go back to the red line and propose that? Do you think there'd be appetite to do that? Or do you think it would be, it would sort of just underline that the last couple of months may have been wasted?
Um, I think as with almost every proposed amendment that we have before us, um, it'd be very split, um, opinions on if that was a good idea or not, because it's very split. Um, about their, that red line plan, a lot of people did really like it, um, as it stood after the, um, staff changes were, um, or proposed, staff ideas were voted in and or out. I, I did want to clarify one thing, but I didn't mean three months from now. I meant once we get back after summer. I think is what.
Three months from August.
Yes, at minimum, maybe more like before. But, um, so, um, just a second.
So I guess, so, so to rephrase, sorry, to rephrase my question slightly then, um, the, I know one of the motivations was to, one of the motivations for the plan originally was to get a plan in place so various projects could go ahead. And to get more clarity, um, on what we wanted as a community. So given that um, in January, I don't know what the expectations were about when a revision would be available. And now we're talking about, you know, the end of the year, maybe even early next year before there's a revision available. Is it worth revisiting that within the Trails Committee? Is it worth revisiting that decision on whether you're happy with the red line or not? I, I think that's something the Trails Committee should deal with. I'm just asking the question. There is a, while you don't want to redo the vote, there is a significant change in circumstances since the original vote.
I'm not sure if people would, um, when they voted, they had already seen the proposed changes. So they kind of knew, people knew what was, um, you know, if they voted it down, then there would be discussion on these. And that's been a point of contention in itself that, um, I don't know, I, I feel like the process has been changed and, and is so confusing already to everybody. I don't, I just, I don't know what people would think of suddenly saying now we're going to just vote on the red line again.
Understood. Thanks. Uh, Shannon, you have a question or a comment?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I know that I sent in some comments, so I, um, won't totally repeat those, but I'm just thinking kind of of a midline here. Um, I don't think that it's necessarily accepting comments or accepting the red line. Because if we accept the red line, those comments can still stay as part of the document. If we accept the red line, we're not taking things out of what we proposed. We are kind of keeping everything as it was from the community input and from the 36 or however many votes that we went through as a committee. Those other ideas can still be there to look at later. And so it's not like those ideas are necessarily going away, but I think we've maybe reached the point where we're, instead of being a cohesive group, we're more of a, um, conflicted group, which won't have a, which I guess won't lead to a, to a easy outcome. And so if we pause and put the red line forward and get some of these trails that are on there going and say, let's go back later and maybe look at this process and revisit these comments later at another time when maybe we've kind of revisited our process and things like that. So it's not saying we don't acknowledge these ideas, but right now it's not necessarily the best route for this trail plan to do it right now.
Understood. Thank you. Um, given this is not actually an item of business, this is just a, this is a presentation, I, I'd like to, uh, sort of keep this discussion short or not, not go on much longer. My sense is that this is still in the hands of the Trails Committee and we've obviously had some discussion around it and they may want to perform some other action. We should probably have this on our agenda for next month, uh, potentially as an item of business. But, uh, again, I'm interested in any comments from the board on that topic. Jennifer?
I do think before there's actual voting on it, it does have to, uh, it's not actually quite true, especially uh, given the timeliness of this, or as somebody else corrected me recently, the time sensitive part. I don't think it meets that criterion for leapfrogging over the new business and old business, um, uh, protocol. But I, I would like to throw out there that, um, I think it is possible that, that something approaching a war of attrition is happening with trails that isn't conducive for, uh, either a well-worked plan or for the community in general. And also to an extent, uh, we do at GBOS have some responsibility for this because public monies went into this plan and it wasn't money from trails. So, uh, it was not privately fundraised and so it's, it's a strange thing and I, I certainly don't want to usurp trails, but we've heard so many times that maybe something it's not particularly conducive for a number of goals is happening, that maybe, maybe there could be an argument made for uh, GBOS to step in. And I just, I want to throw out that at least I for one am open to that possibility. It would need to be on the business and not as an update.
Thanks, Jennifer. I agree with you. So I think we, we put it on, um, new business in the next meeting and, uh, Trails can obviously, you know, take into account the discussion we've had so far tonight. And, uh, if, if they want to present any, if they want us to perform some action or, um, or the community in general does, then we'll have that discussion next month. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Can I make?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. Just, um, I, I agree with that. I, I would like to, um, see maybe Gilbert's bail committee try to work this out sooner, maybe with our red line vote. I would caution that before you go into that meeting, um, let your parliament, parliamentarian know what you're voting on and if that apply, Robert rules apply. Because I could see that getting hung up from the very get-go with, with, um, arguments for it against it. So have a very clear idea of what those rules are if you're able to make that vote. One more comment. And yeah, bringing it to GBOS, I, I think it does, it could do some good just to get this over with. I think Kyle mentioned HLB is going to review this, plans are going to review this. They know that we've been, the Trails Committee has been doing this for almost two years and going back and forth and not getting anywhere. And I wouldn't say that's, it doesn't matter losing legitimacy, but I think present something to HLB that you want to prove, it would be nice to, um, just finalize this and hand them a good package. And the longer it's drawn on, they're aware of, of these meetings and likely attend them. And I just think it would, um, benefit the plan and the Trails Committee and the community to, um, reconsider, um, possibly that red line.
Just one clarification, um, although this will, I'm sure will be discussed at HLB, the same as we discuss HLB's plans. They don't approve it or deny it. Um, we're just, they, they can just make comments, same as others. However, when it goes through, um, to the assembly, they would accept it or not accept it. So that is the decision making point.
And HLB would, HLB had a comment.
Yeah, yeah, and an opinion on it. So they could support it or not support it. I have particular comments, but they're not an approval body.
Yeah, I commented on what Robert's rules says about that. So according to the parliamentarian who spoke on this not long ago, under Robert's rules to reconsider votes and, um, a motion would need to be made by someone from the winning side. So, uh, someone who would.
Sorry, uh, sorry, Jonathan. I don't really want to interrupt you, but I do want to interrupt you. The, that, that's kind of getting into its level of detail. I don't think it's quite appropriate for this meeting, but thank you very much.
My comment was just have a pretty sound, or my, my comment was just have a pretty sound, um, understanding of those rules. So you don't have to argue those for the, so you can actually vote.
Carolyn, did you have a, uh, just a last comment?
Yep, that's what I just had was the last comment. I just wanted to thank you guys for all your, uh, ideas and input on this. And it is very frustrating for everybody involved right now. But I wouldn't say we wasted two years. Actually, the, the work done by the original, um, Trail Plan Committee was great and we, um, we came up with a good plan and, but anyway, um, yeah, but, uh, appreciate all your input. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. I agree. I mean, the majority of the work's been done. It's just the finalizing. Thank you very much for your, for your work on this. Okay, um, so we're going to have this on the agenda in the future, so I'm going to move, move ahead. Um, item number four, legislative reports. Uh, Senator Roger Holland and Representative James Corcoran. I don't know if we have any, I can't see the list of attendees. I don't know if we have anyone from their office.
I did not see anybody come in.
I think they're both in session at the moment.
I think they are too.
Yeah. Okay, not hearing anybody, um, move on to assembly. Is Susanna or Randy on? Oh, yes, I see Randy's on. Do you want to send the update?
Thanks. Uh, real, real quick. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Real quick, Bryce texted me and he said he will not be able to make it due to a prior commitment. So I want to make sure I get that out of far, before I forget. So we had a special session two weeks, so some of this, two weeks ago, so some of this will sound familiar. So we have a special election for District One, twelfth member coming up, that'll be June twenty-first. We also have AO twenty-twenty-two dash sixty, section three, that was laid on the table and will be discussed next Tuesday. And that's removal of elected official, adding the mayor and supervisory board members to that. So we'll start debate on that next week. They scroll down here. We also had, two weeks ago, we had AO twenty-twenty-two dash zero nine eight S. That was the budget that was approved, then subsequently vetoed by the mayor. Last Friday, we had a work session and those vetoes were overridden. So that'll allow us to start producing the, the mail rates on the website, which should go up, I heard Wednesday or tomorrow possibly. We also have, which I mentioned last time, the ARPA funds are coming available here in the next month or so. We'll start distributing those and we have a process in place for accepting proposals. So if you go to the, the Muni website, click on Assembly. I believe the second bullet down will walk you through that process on how to submit a proposal. We'll then see that come through email and we will work through on which of those gets approved. Also, getting emails on the executive branch's request for an independent audit of the election. Then also AM twenty-eight dash, sorry, twenty-eight-eight dash two-zero-two-two emails on library appointments. We have two appointments by the mayor for the Library Advisory Board. Let's see, last assembly meeting, we also approved AO twenty-twenty-two dash one-eleven. And that was for the Navigation Center to start working towards that end. We also accepted a youth assembly seat. It's a non-voting seat. I believe it came from the Youth Commission and she will serve till June, at which point she heads off to college. And then we'll look for the second nominee. There were only two nominees, so I'm not sure if we'll go to the second or if we'll start that process over, hoping we get more nominees. And then we have an upcoming joint ASD Assembly Meeting, I believe that's in two weeks. And last piece, just in case you didn't know, this Friday is Bike to Work Day. So if you're so inclined, recommend you bike to work. Any questions for me?
Um, I had a question about the ARPA funding. I think at the last meeting, there was a discussion about, at some point, there was discussion about ten million dollars of that being directed at, at sort of governmental projects. And whether there had to be at the same application process for those governmental product, projects. And I wondered if you had an update on that.
Uh, sorry, I don't, I do not have an update on that. I do know the, the mayor's office put forward about thirty projects. If you have projects that you want submitted, I'll say for now, since the deadline's May twentieth, go ahead and, and fill out the form, send that in, and then Suzanne and I can take that out and we can represent that. Because right now, as you remember from the last discussion, nonprofits, businesses, associations and tribal and education entities are the only ones that can submit. But if you submit it through there, we'll get an email with the proposal, or you can send it separately and then we'll represent that during our work session.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other questions from board members? Or the public? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I see that the President of the Mayor's Office, so Anchorage School Board liaison, who I think is still Kelly lessons until maybe tomorrow. I see, I see on the ASD meeting.
I thought I was, I thought I would have to say goodbye to Girdwood, but, but I was wrong. We, we did reorganize following the election, but we're not going to be changing our community councils until July first. So here I am again and it's a, it's nice to be in a comfortable space. I will try to be brief. Again, well, I will try to drop, I don't remember if I can have access to the chat, but I'll look for that in just a second. Online, we have something called ASD Connect and that's a really great summary of all of what's happening or a lot of what's happening in ASD. Right, this past week has been graduation season, actually the past couple of weeks, it's really joyful. I saw that we have about twenty-four hundred students graduating and that doesn't include all the smaller ceremonies or the middle school graduations or the kindergarten graduations. But twenty-four hundred seniors headed out and I was able to shake hundreds of their hands and saw a lot of smiles. And that was just really a joyful experience. For everybody else, classes end May nineteenth. And if students are returning to school, parents can go ahead and use the Parent Connect called NQ to register for the upcoming school year. And if your student already has a Chromebook, it's my understanding that they can continue to, to keep it over the summer. And I think principals have protocols for that. For community members, if you drive past a, a school this summer, just, you know, make sure that it looks like it's safe. Keep your eye out for any vandalism, anything that just doesn't look right and reach out to EPD if you see something that looks just not right. That's the upcoming school board meetings, we have one tomorrow. We will have a work session at four o'clock where we're going to be doing a deep dive into what will be our most recent reading assessment information. Normally the board gets those a couple of weeks in advance of one of our goal monitoring sessions, but because of testing, there were some technology snafus, everything was delayed a little bit. We, we haven't seen those results yet. So anyways, that'll be news to us tomorrow afternoon at four. And tomorrow night's meeting is also kind of special. We do something a couple of times a year called the Denali Awards. So we'll be celebrating some outstanding ASD employees, so that's also a joyful event. We have an, so I will, we had our board reorganization. President Margot Bellamy will be returning as president. Carl Jacobs will be the board's vice president. Dora Wilson will be the clerk and I will be the treasurer again. So that means that I will continue in the Finance Committee. So I can share that at our Finance Committee on the twenty-fourth, we're going to be looking at the upcoming audit plan for the upcoming year. We will be doing a bit of a bond debrief. We're asking the administration for updates on where we stand, sort of as we close out this fiscal year. Right now, you know, we don't have our legislators in this meeting because they're busy wrapping things up. So I'm hoping that we will have a better understanding of what ASD's financial position will be, you know, overcoming days as the legislature settles, settles things. And I was just over at the Hillside Community Council and we ended up kind of spitballing an idea to have a better way for the board to communicate with community members across the municipality about, you know, we have this pending fiscal cliff. So the question is, what are we doing on a month-to-month basis? And so I'd like to talk with fellow board members and the administration about how we can better communicate the work that's happening behind the scenes. So you're the first folks that I've presented that idea to. I'll, I'll talk about, about that with some other people on the board, with my fellow board members soon. But I thought it was a really great suggestion to, to improve our community understanding of where we're all at. Again, as Randy mentioned, we've got that joint school board assembly meeting on the third. Looking ahead to, to the end of summer, summer, oh, we have summer school. I don't know how many students are enrolled. I've asked Dr. Bishop for an update in tomorrow's meeting. I know that we, we have allocated funds for a robust summer school experience. So I'd like to know what that's going to look like. But the first day of fall, of the fall, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be August eighteenth for grades one through twelve and August twenty-fifth for our entering kindergarteners. And that's because the little ones get one-on-one meetings with their families and their teacher to really help the teachers understand where each student is at. So that's, that's what we've got. Recent meetings, the board has done deep dives into financial literacy, which will be a component of, a graduation component, it'll be embedded within economics. And we've spoken about the problem of chronic absenteeism. It doesn't matter if you are excusing or not excusing your kid's absence. If they're, if they're gone for ten percent of the time, they're still gone. So that's something that we as a community really need to work on. So I will pause there, it's getting late, and see if there are any questions or comments.
Thank you. I do have one question. There's a, there was an, I think since we spoke last, the new superintendent that'd been chosen. I see some chatter about qualifications, would you like to make any comment on that?
You know, there, there was a blog post that went, so Dr. Bryant is, is joining the district and the board has approved his candidacy. We expect him, he might be in town right now, I think he might be at tomorrow night's meeting. I haven't had confirmation of that, but he will take the helm of the school district effective July first. And it's my understanding that Dr. Bishop and the administration are really welcoming him and transitioning him over the coming weeks. So there was a blog post, but the board is confident that he will meet the necessary qualifications. The state is in charge of certifying incoming teachers and superintendents. And so that's the board's position right now.
Thank you.
We do see a problem.
Thank you. Any other comments from board here? Questions? Shannon, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mike. I wanted to just comment on something that Kelly mentioned, the Denali Awards. One of our community members from the Girdwood School is receiving one of them. I don't, I'm not sure if we're allowed to say their name, but it's a pretty big honor, so go Girdwood School.
Yay, that's great. I haven't, I haven't studied the list, so I will, I will do a double check and make sure that I'm up to speed on who our recipients are. It's a really fabulous honor, so thanks for sharing.
Thank you, Gashen. Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. Thank you so much for the presentation, it's been a great, it's last year to even have that connection with school board.
Absolutely. And are you guys, I have a question for you, are you meeting in June?
Yes.
Okay, I'll see you then.
We meet, we meet every month, we don't take summer hiatus. We have.
There's no. All right. Have a good one, everyone.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number five, supervisor reports. Anyone having any reports?
Uh, this is Brianna, I'll just thank Kyle and Margaret's efforts and the community on social media that helped with the latest vandalism at the pavilion in the park over here. And hope that we don't have continued issues like that. But I'm glad that people reached out and the corporates came forward to do community service work.
Thank you. Andy, Kyle, Amanda, or Jennifer? Okay, I have one just comment update. We voted at a recent meeting to support House Bill four-one-one, which gives more options to service areas such as Girdwood for, for using tax exemptions for economic development. And today it passed, it had already passed the, it passed the House end of last month and today it passed the Senate. I think there may have to be a concurrent vote, which is a technicality if they get to it. So it may or may not be on the books in the next few weeks. It was a very quick process. That's it from me. We'll move on to item number six, service provider reports. Is Chief Weston on?
No, she is in transit tonight, so she's not available.
Okay, do we have any update?
No, but they, just quickly, I'll just briefly, they started fire on fire one and they spent all weekend at AFD Training Center with new volunteers being trained. And their enrollment is still low as to a lot of, well, but available volunteers is still low as to people are hindering the summer season, so they're constantly bringing on new people. So if anybody would like to volunteer, they're looking for applicants.
And there was the, the safety blazer, I think it was called, earlier this week as well, or last.
Correct, and then I safety blazer last week about fire, bear maze, everything, so.
Just thank you to organ, for organizing that, Chief Weston. Okay, so we'll move on to police, Chief Gashen.
Uh, good evening. I know there's been some concerns posted on Facebook regarding an individual harassing or costing individuals on the trail, potentially brandishing a knife. Couple of things, the one, the reports that has been reported to the Whittier Police Department regarding this individual, we've actually contacted the individual, he actually contacted us to identify himself over this issue. It was, the branding of the knife wasn't a threat against individuals, individual people. It was just concerned that a loose dog may attack him. So that was a concern. The other things are if people want to report a crime or potential safety incident, please report it to the Whittier Police Department, just don't post it on Facebook. If it's posted on Facebook, we generally don't respond to it. But some of the posts that were posted on Facebook that happened multiple times with different individuals, those individuals that have contacted the police department, we have contacted them and generated police reports on it. Additionally, there were some concerns, people posted on Facebook regarding traffic in Girdwood area or vehicle traffic enforcement. Just want to give you some stats right now, and this is from the beginning of this calendar year to date. So during that time, Whittier Police Department cut fourteen calls for service on a targeted traffic area. That's when we do targeted traffic areas are Alberg, Timberline, specific areas that people request us concentrate traffic efforts. Of those, we initiated two-hundred-and-forty-four traffic stops, which resulted in thirty-four citations. Couple of things of note, that's of notices on Aliaska Highway, in the thirty mile per hour zone, we cited people recently for going forty-seven over posted or for doing forty-seven mile per hour, forty-nine mile per hour, fifty-six, fifty-two, or fifty-five mile per hour, oh, in a thirty mile per hour posted area. In the areas that have posted forty-five on the Aliaska Highway, individuals were cited at sixty and sixty-four miles per hour. Alberg area in the twenty-five mile per hour zone, one individual cited for going forty-seven over the posted. Additionally, since we do go between Girdwood and Whittier, couple ones of, of interest, as most people know, on Seward Highway, they change for the summertime forty-five mile per hour zone for people and pedestrians that park in the side road and go dip netting. We recently tagged one vehicle for going a hundred and two miles per hour in a forty-five mile per hour zone, another for going seventy. So we are doing concentrated efforts in specific targeted areas in the Girdwood area. And for the community that wants specific areas, like we've done, specific areas requested by the community, other areas that we get several complaints on for people that are speeding traffic in those areas, please contact us and then we could do some targeted enforcement in those areas. Unfortunately, we don't post specific times when we do this. We, these times are generally random, different times of day, but it also includes evenings on weekends and well as weekdays. So with that, also like to thank Michelle who invited us to the, the Bear Safety Event last weekend. We did send officers there, it was pretty successful, the officers did some contact with individuals. We was scheduled to do last, about a week and a half ago, a behavioral health training with Anchorage Fire Department. A wrench got thrown, but what were, the, the initially was supposed, they were supposed to do the training in Whittier, but apparently Anch, Fire Department cannot go to Whittier to do training. So we're re-establishing the training areas for that, they have to stay within the municipality of Anchorage. So Lieutenant Corbett is working with them on facilitating another area to do that training. Other than that, business as usual. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to either email me or contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. So when it comes to traffic enforcement, are you saying you want the public to contact you directly? Through the non-emergency number?
If, yeah, do the non-emergency number, if there's an area, like we've had requests for Crow Creek Road, because we have multiple complaints of individuals speeding on that road, we'll set up specific areas where the officers will concentrate on for that week or so to concentrate on, like we've done Alberg, we've done Aliaska Highway, we've done Crow Creek Road, we've done Timberline, specific areas where the public has it. Otherwise, the officers still do traffic enforcement, but as on roll and patrol, they do traffic enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? From the public? I'm not seeing any hands. Thank you very much for the report. Thank you very much for the report. I appreciate the work.
Thank you.
We'll move on to roads, parks, and rec. Kyle?
Sure. Briefly, we want to welcome Bob Muka as our seasonal employee. He's on working out there and actually started at 5:00 AM this morning and he will be out there seven, five days a week. And Bob's lived here in town for a long time, so many people may know him. And we are opening up most of all the parks, so everything is up and operational and we're getting things set up. If they're not set up already, pretty much pretty full, full go right now for everything out there, so. And then out in the trails, we're just asking people to be sensitive. The trails still are soft and melting out. And so if it looks like it's too muddy to hike through, you probably shouldn't. So and same for bikes, we're asking bikes to stay off the trails until things harden up. So with roads, with the weight restrictions came off today that is posed by the state and the municipality. And so we are able to start with spring maintenance. And so on the Timberline side, he was saw today the graders are out and water trucks. And we're starting spring grading and dust suppression measures. So they'll be putting calcium on starting tomorrow and then moving through all the different areas. So we really ask that people continue to drive slowly and keep the dust down until we can get to your area. It's been a very dry spring, but we will, we're on our way to hopefully get that taken care of. And then we are also starting several projects related to last year's Halloween storm to finish those repairs and move them forward. And we're waiting at this point on the state to start the reimbursement process for the payments that we've already done. So they've been overloaded with emergency declarations, you know, most recently Seward and then the flooding with ice dams. So they have a limited staff, so they're trying to handle us as best they can. So we're working through that process. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Or the public? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we will move on. Public comment. Person's offering public comment, state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, must be on subject and not listed on the agenda. Do you have any, anybody who'd like to make a public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up. Like in the room or online, although I think Kyle, there are these, there's, there's that mark on top, is that still? Oh, that's lobby room.
Yeah. Okay, a little bit, nope, otherwise we're good.
Okay, Crystal? Please go ahead.
Hey there, I was just wondering if you have received or thought about providing more comment in regards to the solid waste services, suggestion to close transfer station on additional days. I just, as somebody who doesn't have a garage, storing trash between trash pickup and when the transfer station might open again is sometimes a challenge. And so I just wish there was a alternative option, either like something that had to do with video cameras and, and access to the transfer station or a dump, a dump area like similar to what Cooper Landing has with those large bear proof containers. I just think that having the additional shortage of the transfer station is going to cause additional trash problems. And I wish that we could create a solution for that.
Right, yeah, I think we, we mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, the, so the solid waste services are planning to close on a Sunday, which they weren't previously, they were open Friday through Monday. And now they'll be open Friday, Sat, as of the end of the month, they'll be open Friday, Saturday, and Monday, but not Sunday anymore. My understanding is this is a staffing issue across the system. We can definitely bring it up and ask the municipal to reconsider. I don't think there's much hope in, in that happening in this particular case, because I just don't think they have the manpower to do it. But we can absolutely bring it up again. As to, as to a different system, I don't know what our options are there. Under code, we actually technically have the ability to spend money on, on waste collection, but I think that's a mistake. I think we could, look, I think we should bring it up at the, we could, I don't know if we're discussing this later. We can bring it up at the meeting with the municipal manager and just check what the options are. Okay, any other public comments? Thank you, Crystal, for bringing it up. We're not seeing any other comments, so we will move on to old business, item number seven, promoting for Girdwood Forest Fair. And I think Karen is presenting.
Hi, yes, thank you. I was, you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I, I brought the, our draft site plan and our new map last month. And so I hope you had a chance to look it over and see if you might have any questions. Just a brief overview, it's essentially, we're thrilled over the moon to be actually being able to put on the forest fair again. It'll be the 47th fair, because we don't count for years, we didn't get to have it. And basically, we're planning the same type of event as we had in 2019. A few changes would be the site plan changes, you would see it's a new plan, but as far as like the graphic. But the major change there is we have moved the food booths over closer to the ball field, if you will. So they're out from under the trees. This makes the fire reviewers happier. And there are at least some of us in the forest fair committee that think this might help decrease some congestion. And so we're just interested to see how that might work overall. And the boothy people have been working really hard to unruffle any feathers if somebody's not getting their exact booth and so forth. Other than that, we're adding a few more toilets and wash stations, several more wash stations. And we're working with porta potty vendors to see how we can best facilitate, you know, the pumping. He has to come down and pump them a couple of times. So we're trying to, we may end up bringing down more fixtures than we need and locking some down. So we are thinking creatively about how to make sure that needs are taken care of. And in addition to that, the other need that needs to be taken care of is the issue of parking. And so we're optimistic that the Aliaska Resort is still going to do the relationship we've had for years using the daylight parking lot. And we're working on that agreement. And we also are going to have the Girdwood to Anchorage bus. We did it one day in 2019 and it worked out really well. And we are, we've gotten some sponsors and we're going to do it full days on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the Anchorage to Girdwood bus. And we're gonna do our best to encourage people to utilize that extra transportation to avoid packing the cars into the Girdwood Valley. And I would think a safer mode of transportation as well, because it's a, it's right before 4th of July. So we think this is a great benefit for everyone, overall for the community and for fairgoers, and we're excited about that. I will, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a leap that most people are familiar with the fair and how it's run. And I'm not going to take a long time to go through that. What I did want to read you was something that you may not have always heard, but that the forest fair has been trying, we've been talking about it more in our meetings, bringing it up every meeting. And that's the forest fair mission statement. So I'm going to read it for you, you might not have it. It's, Girdwood Forest Fair is dedicated to an Alaska arts, crafts, music, and food, and is committed to a free family event for all Alaskans to enjoy that's not run solely by, that is run solely by volunteers and supported by patrons. And the goals are to showcase the best Alaskan original arts, crafts, music, and food, provide a place where even the smallest artists can afford a cost of erecting a booth, and a commitment to not be overrun by greed or a venue solely built to bring in money. And we want to run it in an environmentally conscious event for the benefit of the community and maintain a free event of, free of moral conflicts created by dogs, politics, and religious beliefs. And we are also requesting, if we can, I think there's a draft motion, we're looking for a letter of non-objection to us moving forward with the forest fair event this year and also kind of a confirmation of the waiver of the parks and rec fees as has been established typically over the last years and years.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Brianna?
Thank you, Karen, for your presentation again and the site map and all of this. I might be missing something, so I just had a question for, in years past, you've done water refill stations for water bottles. Is that somewhere near the entrance or where is it this year?
It will be next to the T-shirt booth. That's, we've got a water line stepped in.
Okay, I also appreciate the recycling and trash line recycling efforts and encouraging people to reuse their cups for the other gardens. So hopefully that's across the board. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions, any questions or comments from the, the public, from the community? Not seeing anything online, so I read the enterta motion. I believe we, we discussed last month, but we did not vote on the waiving of fees, I believe. Is that correct, Kyle?
It's more, it's a voting on accepting the site plan and confirmation, there's no objection. So the board supervisors passed a resolution, I think in 16, that waived fees for the forest fair. Besides just administrative fees, which are basically initial permit fees, but all like vendor fees and things like that would normally be collected at a fair like this by parks would not be collected for Girdwood.
And that's had no sunset on it?
And no sunset on it. So we just, we, every year we ask to make sure you don't have objection. If somebody had objection to it, then we would need to bring that up as, as business. But we want to make sure because it's new board members and they may not be aware of that. But they are asking tonight for a letter of non-objection to the fair happening and, and as spelled out in the site plan, happening in 22.
Okay, so I understand the motion to write the letter of non-objection.
So moved, this is Brianna.
I'll second, this is Amanda.
Thank you. Any discussion? My only comment is it would be nice to reaffirm, the reaffirm the no fees from time to time. I'm surprised that we passed a, many years ago, passed something with no, with no end in sight.
Sure.
We may consider something next year, but we'd, we'd have like a five year or something.
Well, we will definitely be back in May with an update and hopefully at that point in time, we have all the permitting requirements in, excuse me, in June. And at that point, we can share to what is being waived and what is being collected and we will move forward with that.
Yep, well, anyway, we have a, we have a motion, a seconded motion in front of us to support a, to write a letter of non-objection. So I think we can see no other comments, I think we can move to a vote. Do the roll call, please.
Sure. Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
A motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you again, Carol, for doing all the work and presenting such a comprehensive packet to us.
Well, thank you all so much. Look forward to seeing you at the fair.
Yeah, indeed. I'm looking forward to being there. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number eight, gender item LUC 2204-05, request for GBOS resolution of support, Girdwood Health Clinic Phase Two modification, Assembly action to Title 21 allows larger health service building in the GC7 district. And this is going in front of the Urban Design Commission on June the 8th. We'll be presenting this, so some live online and.
I think Taryn is on line, and so I would expect her to.
Yep, I'm here, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
We can, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks for having us back once again. As most of you know, the Girdwood Health Clinic is undergoing a new construction of the new building. And the Urban Design Commission approved this original design back in May 2021, and Phase One is currently under construction. So the action that we are requesting your support for today is for the modification of Phase Two of the building. And so in March of 2020, just this year, the Assembly passed the text amendment to Title 21, allowing larger health service buildings in the GC7 district. And so with that new increase, we're hoping to provide another 930 square feet of clinic space in addition to the original design that was approved in May of 21. And so the total new size that we are proposing of the clinic is going to be 7,350 square feet. And this addition is going to be replacing what was the patio on that original site plan. And so it's the back, it's the southern half of the building, the southwest side. And so the right of way frontages are not changing. There is no other changes to the site plan other than, again, that back patio will now be building space. Part of this request does also include a design variance, and that is for that south facing plane, the south side of the building. And this is specifically, there's a part in Title 21, the design for downtown district, that more than one third of the total plane of the south side has to be offset, and we are a little bit over. So we are requesting a design variance for that. And both of those motions will be going before the Urban Design Commission here on June 8th. And we would very much appreciate a letter of support from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just a quick, and just to verify the patio you're going to enclose, I believe you mentioned earlier that's for mental health services and, and community meetings or what exactly did you have in mind there?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. Oh, thank you so much, Kyle, that's really helpful. So the specialty service building in green and that consult room, the storage and that access hallway. So yep, that lower left corner, that's what's being added on. And that specialty services room will have a separate entrance that the community might be able to use, you know, for AA meetings, behavioral health meetings, health trainings, things like that. It's been designed specifically to allow for secure separation from the rest of the clinic, which would allow those potential community uses as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, or the public? Traditionally, we have read a resolution into the record, but since we've been producing a packet and it's been published beforehand, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip it and it's available to read if anyone wants to see it. But traditionally, we would, this would be in the form of a motion. And since I'm chair, maybe somebody else can rather than read it, just propose it's a motion.
I propose we resolve support for the Girdwood Health Clinic Modified Phase Two to increase total building size from 6420 to 7,350 square feet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any additional discussion or any, particularly any questions or comments on the wording of the resolution itself? I did have a question, sorry. Yeah, just before we go to that, I did have a question, we, we did vote on it, I remember last week, but it's not in the, it's not actually in this version of the, the resolution. Do you, Kyle, do you remember or maybe Margaret, what the vote was remaining?
Oh, it was definitely a favor. I don't think we had any objections.
Right.
Yep.
I didn't really clarify that. But we'll, we'll put the numbers in before it gets signed.
Yes.
Kathy, please go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say you might want to look at the spelling of Girdwood, right? In the, in the beginning of the resolution.
Oh, yes, Girdwood. Thank you. One of my prized possessions is a, is a shirt, first, I think it was the triathlon that finished it. And they have grid wood in that, G-R-I-D, it's a shirt. I'm very proud of that. First edition with spelling mistake. Thank you, Karen.
Sure.
So I, I guess as amended, the technical amendments. Not seeing any other comments, I think we can go to the roll call.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and thanks to the, the clinic and the, and the professional staff as well who've been doing the design. It's looking great. Thank you, thank you, everybody, and thanks to the, uh, the clinic and the, and the professional staff as well who've been doing the design, it's looking great. Really, yes, I'm looking forward to, to it being open. Um, okay, we will move on to item number nine, gender item LUC 2204-07, uh, this is marijuana license renewal. Um, the request is, uh, if there's objections from the, um, community, we can, uh, request a public hearing in front of the Assembly, otherwise we will, uh, send a letter of non-injection.
So, uh, the, the like, uh, excuse me, marijuana license renewal is similar to the alcohol license renewal in the sense that it comes before the board, just like alcohol licenses. And at this point in time, herbal cash is up for renewal, so if there is objection, um, uh, we require a resolution of GBOS, no later than June 1st. If there's no objection, then a letter, a request for a letter of non-injection be sent to the, um, to the control board for their review.
Okay, um, any comments from the board? Um, again, I'm not seeing any hands from Amanda or Jennifer, um, I've not definitely heard no complaints or only positive comments about the business. So I would entertain a motion to write a letter of non-injection.
I move that we write a letter of non-injection, this is Brianna, for the marijuana license renewal.
You're second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, so we have a, a motion and a second, um, again, an opportunity for any, uh, comments from the board or from the, from the public. Not seeing any comments, uh, let's move to a roll call vote.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, everybody. Um, we'll now move on to, uh, item number 10. First of all, we'll deal with sound, uh, we have the, the air handle just turned on. It's got very cold in here, so. Okay, it's an update on the status of HLB draft 2022 annual work program and five-year management plan. I believe, Kyle, you were going to check with HLB where the, where that stood.
Correct, so at this point in time, there is no update, um, the comments have all been received by the deadline. Uh, following that, there was a change in staff and there was only one remaining, uh, land manager for HLB at this point in time, she's only been on the position for just under four months. And so, um, she has been trying to learn the job and she hasn't had a chance to tackle this, so that is all pending at this point in time.
Okay, do we have an approximate schedule for when it's going to go in front of the advisory commission?
I have not heard.
Okay, but we, again, we know it's not this month.
We, yeah, it will not be this month, uh, if I'm a betting man, but I can't say.
Thank you, any comments or questions from the board? Or the public, community? Okay, thank you, we'll move on to item number 11, good, uh, gender item LUC 2201-06, good with industrial park concerns with power and plating.
Uh, so, uh, we've been trying to have Director Tromley, uh, come out, uh, right now, he's the current director of HLB along with director for many other areas. And, um, he hasn't had time to come out, but we did have Emma come out just to get, get her familiar with the site, she had never been there before, she's the, uh, a remaining land manager. Um, and she's trying to tackle problems, uh, and she's doing, uh, one at a time as she has time. And the first issue she's taking up is trying to give better access to, um, the new leases down there, they are opening up some more area for, uh, five more lots. So putting a gravel driveway in with better grade, um, because right now when it does rain, their approaches get pretty muddy. So she's working through that and the procurement process to make that happen, uh, at this point in time. But, uh, otherwise, the other major concerns that we have with power and plating, um, are on her radar, but, uh, she's very honest that she's trying to handle a lot, uh, with little support and, uh, and understanding, so it's going to take her some time to get it going.
Okay, uh, when you mentioned five new, let, these leases, is that, that's five new permits?
Five new permits, yes, that was arranged with the last land manager before she left.
Okay.
And she was, uh, doing the same thing, looking at putting a better access with gravel pad going into each one.
Okay, thank you, uh, any questions or comments, please go ahead.
I just comment, yeah, that's, I'm glad that she's aware of it and sound like she's working on it and getting up to speed, I think that's going to be helpful, those folks down there using that lot. Need some certainty, um, to back up a little bit, um, maybe remind her if we do have our joint meeting with, um, our land use committee and we're speaking at Holton Hills, it'd be great to have her attend our lease virtually.
Sure.
Okay, any other comments from supervisors or the community? Okay, thanks for the update, Kyle.
Sure.
Um, item number 12, gender item LUC 2201-07, update on state senate redistricting. Um, I can give some update and then I will ask Jennifer for, um, her opinions as well as a observer of this item. Um, there was a, as I think everybody knows, there were, um, three members of the community, um, filed a motion, uh, projecting is the right term, but, um, bottom of, uh, filed something with the court about, uh, the, uh, the Senate pairing of Eagle River, South Eagle River and Turnan and Arkwood and South Anchorage. Um, there was an oral hearing, uh, last, I think it was Thursday, um, and my understanding is the, uh, the judge, the superior court judge, uh, committed to, um, uh, giving a, um, giving an opinion by the end of today, probably this evening. Um, so I would imagine sometime after this meeting or maybe during the meeting, uh, there may be an update of what the status is. Um, it's probably whatever the decision is, there may be yet another appeal to the Supreme Court, but I think that the hope is that this will be resolved in the next couple of weeks. Before the June the first filing deadline, because obviously people who are running for Senate may not know which district they're in. Um, that's the sort of very, very quick summary of where we are at the moment. Um, Jennifer, do you have anything you'd like to add? This is the status.
Well, I've been madly checking the, for updates and there is nothing so far. Um, so no, I don't have any late breaking news, I will say that the hearing was interesting and I learned things. Um, but, uh, just as a reminder, what this boils down to for people who aren't familiar is, uh, us battling the idea of Eagle River getting 10% of the Senate seats when they have 5% of the population. So that's a lot of what this is about.
Yep. Okay, I don't think that, I mean, we, in a previous, uh, previous meeting, we, um, we passed a resolution, uh, with our concerns, so I don't think there's any action needed here unless somebody has a particular desire. Yeah, sure, questions?
Does this, are ballots that are due on the 11th?
Uh, no, no, that's for the federal election.
Okay.
The 11th is the, the 11th is that there's so many elections this year. Yeah, the, uh, June the 11th is for the, uh, federal, um, US House.
Yeah.
Primary. And then we get another chance to vote twice in August and then again, you know, um, no, this will affect the primary, which I think is also in August. And the, the House district is fixed, we're in House District Nine, but so the question is where we get paid for, when two House districts get paired together to provide a, a one senator and that's, uh, was being challenged, right? Okay, um, we're not hearing anything, any other comments or questions, we will move on to item number 13. Um, update on GBOS Resolution 2020-11, Resolution Against Racism Community Forum, Guy.
Um, just to remind people, there was a resolution against racism, uh, that the Gerwood Board of Supervisors wrote in September 2020. And, um, part of that was to convene a public outreach meeting and we haven't pulled that together yet, so, um, I've been tasked trying to, um, develop this meeting, I've contacted three entities, the First Alaskans Institute, Alaska Black Caucus and the Native People Action, and, um, still waiting to hear back and replies, busy time of year, but I'll, I'll keep, I'll keep that up and I'm sure they'll get back to me and, um, we'll go from there, I wouldn't think we would do this until the fall, um, give us time to plan plus, you know, uh, increased attendance in the fall as opposed to the middle of the summer, so it won't happen right away. Um, I did, I believe, um, some of these entities will help and, um, there could be a small cost, um, well, I've seen 150 to $250 an hour to prepare and come present. I, I think it would be worth it, um, I certainly couldn't do it and I don't know, um, yeah, I think, I think that would be worth it, one thing we're going to have to consider is how GBOS or the entity is going to pay for this, uh, before we do it, so we should, um, yeah, just keep that in mind and as we're planning, looking forward, um, be sure that if we do support this, that we have a, a way to fund it as well. And that's all I have right now, um, I welcome any public comment or give you a call if you have any ideas, ideas on this as well, so if you may have any questions. That's all I got.
Thank you, Guy, uh, any questions from the board or around members of the public or community?
Thank you guys for working on this.
Okay, I'm not seeing any questions, so thanks again, Guy, we'll move on to new business. Item number 14, GPSA 2022 budgets, um, we should discuss some meeting dates for our working sessions during June and August, or June through August.
Correct, so, uh, we're just putting this on there as basically the starter and over the next month, you'll probably get an email from Margaret trying to identify some dates, um, through June through August to start our budget review process for 22, uh, for 23, excuse me. And so, uh, we'll, we'll try to have those dates and then we'll confirm them at the next meeting and then start the process from there.
Thank you, um, I do have a question about this process, we've, we've traditionally done three working sessions. Um, I'm not really sure there's quite enough work to cover three working sessions, I wonder if it's worth scheduling two work sessions and then have a date reserved in case we need the third, rather than actually schedule three, which we commit to at the front.
Sure, now, we could, uh, we can, uh, consider that and then discuss it the next meeting to confirm. So we'll, we'll definitely look for dates that are available and then we'll present those to you.
And obviously if people can't make one of the dates, then it makes sense that I'm the three, but.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, any, uh, questions or comments from the board or community?
I have a comment. Yeah, we're putting those dates together, I guess, just particularly for the fire department, um, I know their board, it'd be great to have them sit in on those, these are public meetings and, and it'd be, so maybe let them know as early as possible or if, um, Chief Weston can talk to them and provide dates that they're available to, I know they, on certain nights they meet, we don't want to set it right on top of their board meeting or something like that, or a training event, you know, where they could attend.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, uh, any other comments, questions? Okay, then we'll move on to item number 15, gender item LUC 2205-05, request for GBOS letter of objection to constitutional convention. Um, I think Kathy Geisel is going to present, uh, Donovan's, uh, committee member is sponsoring.
Thank you, Mr. Cojeric, uh, permission to give members of the board their old constitution? I'm going to read for you a couple of pages in it.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for hearing this tonight, um, shall there be a constitutional convention? That's the question that will be on the November 8th ballot. Um, we have had this appear on the ballot every 10 years, it's actually part of the constitution. Uh, when the, uh, the document was being written, we were very young, in fact, we worked a state, we were, it was 1955 to 1956, that winter. And the writers of the constitution said, you know, this is a young state, they need to revisit this document that we're writing, things are going to change. And so that's why it appears on our ballot. We have resoundingly said no, the five previous times that has come up, uh, typically voted two to one, resounding no vote. We have concerns, a group of us have concerns that perhaps this year will be different, there's a lot of discord in our state, in politics right now, and there are folks that are advocating for a yes vote. So I am one of the eight co-chairs, uh, statewide co-chairs of an organization called Defend Our Constitution Coalition. Uh, this has several hundred, uh, Alaskans that have joined us in advocating for a no vote. Um, so while, um, we have the, the co-chairs and the members of this coalition have some very opposite opinions on specific issues, we're united on this one thing, and that is that we should vote no on this, and there's three reasons. Number one, it's unnecessary, number two, it's expensive, and number three, it's dangerous. So number one, unnecessary, the document has existed for actually 61 years. It has been a founding document that has provided a good grounding for the way our government operates, not just our state government, but there's also an article about local governments, how it operates. So for that reason, we don't believe that it needs to be rewritten, now, some folks say 1955 was a long time ago, I think this document might need a few tweaks. Well, in fact, that was provided for also, and if you'll turn in your little constitutions, uh, to page 58 and 59, you'll see, uh, some pages that look like this. So this is the page, these two pages contain all the amendments that have been made to our constitution. You see, the writers of our constitution provided for an amendment process, an idea comes forward, it goes to the legislature in the form of a bill. It is debated, it is evaluated, it is, uh, legal issues are discussed, and then it has to pass by two thirds from the House and two thirds from the Senate before it goes before voters. These are amendments that have been offered, you see the first one in 1966, it is a single topic, it is very targeted and specific, each one of these are very targeted and specific. And you see over here on the right hand side of that page, the vote, so before the voters, now, some of these are shaded. These are, these are resolution, or excuse me, amendments that did not pass the voters. So 40 times amendments have been offered, 28 times they were adopted by the citizens, the other 12 were rejected. We have a way to update our constitution and it's been done successfully. So it's unnecessary to hold a constitutional convention to update the document, there is a process in place. Secondly, it is expensive, so we asked Legislative Research to evaluate what it would cost to put on a constitutional convention. The estimate came out at 17 million dollars, this would provide for 65 delegates, uh, provide for the venue, uh, the legal people you need, the secretarial people, all the IT, you'd need travel per diem and housing for, um, for the delegates, et cetera. We believe the 17 million is a little low, it provides for a 75-day convention. We're at day 118 right now in the legislature and we still don't have a budget. So to rewrite a constitution in 75 days, we think is a little short, but that gives us a ballpark number, 17 million dollars, but that's actually not the real cost. When you think about this process, the idea of voting yes to take this document, set it aside and rewrite it would create significant economic and social unrest in our state. Businesses wouldn't know what the structure of our government would be anymore, would they be investing? Our society would have questions, there's a lot of social issues addressed in this document and there are folks that want to put even more into it. So that kind of unrest would create chaos, and so we're very concerned about that cost, not just the dollars and cents, the 17 million is substantial. And lastly, it's dangerous, so turn to page, uh, let's see, I think it's page 48 in your little book. I have a larger edition, that's why I'm not sure which page yours is, but it's a page 48, it's Article 13. So Article 13, it's a single, uh, section, very brief, it only has four sections, it, it provides for the amendment provision and the revision, the revision is actually the constitution. So section one there is about amendments, number two is about calling the convention, number three is again, calling the convention, but I want you to look at section four. This is the powers of the convention, constitutional. Constitutional conventions shall have plenary power to amend or revise the constitution, subject only to ratification by the people. Plenary powder, power means unlimited, comprehensive power. And the last sentence, no call for constitutional convention shall limit these powers of the convention. So basically, this entire document is up for grabs, as I said, set aside and could be completely rewritten. Now, you may be asking, well, you know, you're concerned about this, but is it really true that there are people that want a yes vote? I mean, likely this is going to be no again, right? Well, in fact, there are two groups already that are opposing, urging people to vote yes. One is the Alaska Independence Party. Bob Byrd is recruiting folks, asking them to vote yes. That group has actually rewritten the document already and it's available on their website. They change many parts of this, this document, most significantly, well, not even most significantly, it's just one, they change government, local governments. Right now, you know, we have boroughs. They would change it to counties, drive the entire state into counties with county boards. And the county board, they proposed, would have the power to select the state senator from that county. That's just one example of some of the things that are in their suggested document. The other group that is also rallying folks to vote yes is the Alaska Family Council. They have many social issues they would like to change in this document. And there's a myriad of other ideas that could come up. Abortion certainly will be one of them. How we choose our judges, the judicial council is a big issue in here. School of funding, should we fund private schools as well as public schools? So these are the kinds of things that we believe would be significantly controversial, could certainly get either put into the constitution or a lot of time spent debating it in a convention. So let's say that, that they, they end up actually, we have a convention, they rewrite the document and they put it before the voters. The voters could still say no, which means the entire process would have been a waste of time. The entire process would take approximately four years. Twenty twenty-two, we vote yes. Twenty twenty-four, we would elect the delegates. In the meantime, rules would be written for how the convention would be held. So twenty twenty-four, we'd have the delegates elected. And then twenty twenty-six, the convention will have been held and the document now is before voters to vote on. So not until twenty twenty-six would it be resolved. Four years of social and economic upheaval. We believe that that is dangerous, unnecessary and very, very expensive. So we do urge folks to vote no. While I am here tonight to, as your document, as your agenda says, to request a letter of objection to the constitutional convention question on the November eighth, twenty twenty-two general election ballot. You see on the rack card that I gave you and the document in your packet, we have a website. There's a lot more information on the website, a bit more details, some video of some Alaskans speaking, as well as a list of Alaskans who said, publish my name. So my neighbors and friends know that I'm supporting a no vote. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I have one question immediately. In previous rounds or previous times when this has come up, has there ever been a sort of concerted, organized effort for a vote, vote yes, or is this the first time?
This is the first time that we've had a concerted effort for a yes vote. One of the other subjects, of course, is the PFD, which right now is causing quite a furor in June. This is another subject that folks are wanting to bring up. So we have this constellation of items coming together, the PFD, abortion, a lot of concern about the courts and whether they are impartial. All of this coming together is rather unique. And so that's why we're starting to see a huge push for a yes.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have two quick, Kathy, thank you very much. And hearing it in person, it's different than land use, getting it online, to read it, see you. So, for example, the last two decades, do you know what ratio voted no and what ratio voted yes in the state? Is it like overwhelmingly?
I did not bring that document, but I do have it at home. I don't think I have it in my, in my reference material. But those were, those most recent ones were definitely two to one votes.
You said that.
Yeah, no votes. Two for every vote yes, there were two that said no.
And then do people, you think, have an awareness where this seventeen million would come from? Just say, yes, let's do it. And then they realize they're going to be paying for it?
It's a question that is asked. This is about my tenth presentation to different citizen groups. And that is a question, the state pays for this. So, yeah, it would come under the budget. And I do think seventeen million is rather low, a low estimate.
I have a question, maybe to our board. Can we, can we write this letter for something on the general ballot? Whether we oppose it or not, you know, is it, is that a job as a board to make comments day or day for, during the general election? Seems like there would be some kind of conflict of interest. I don't know. I'm just curious if we could even do it.
There are other communities, I'm sorry I didn't bring on lists, that have had their assemblies write letters of support for a no vote. And then, of course, organizations, right? But that's a good question. That's up to you, obviously.
Being a publicly, that's the board, right?
Yeah, I mean, my sense is we can, we can absolutely take. I mean, one of the things in here is how local governments operate. So one of the possibilities is that it strips away what power we have. So we can, of course, have an opinion on that, for example, as well as many, many other issues. But I think it definitely falls within the kind of community representative role, I would say. But again, that's something we can discuss when it actually comes up for the next month. One, one comment I would say is, is although the recommendation here is for a letter of objection, we'd probably write this as a resolution. I think that's the way we'd actually do it. Then we can, you know, we can go into more details, a little bit more for.
And what's on the screen, Kyle's put on the screen here is a suggested, it's a sample resolution. And when we wrote that, we kind of encompassed all the different user groups that might have interest. You can certainly, obviously, edit this. The last two, therefore, just says we encourage a no.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Jennifer?
Okay, I just wanted to thank Kathy for that very thorough presentation. Thank you. And also, I wanted to echo Guy's question. I'd like to consider between now and our next meeting and also maybe discuss at the next meeting our jurisdiction, if you will, on this, just so we, we have that coming from more than one authority, that it is our role to, to weigh in on this.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any other comments. So it will be, I think Land Use will be bringing this up and giving advisory vote probably next month, and we will definitely be discussing it next month. The time scale for this is, obviously, it's not going to go on the ballot until November.
Correct.
So is there any reason to do it quickly? I mean, is there any advantage in it being June rather than July? If we have further questions?
Certainly not. You know, one of the reasons, this coalition actually began forming back October, November of last year. The reason being, some polling has been done by another group, not by us. We got a high-level report. When people are called, cold called and said, shall there be a constitutional convention? A majority of them say yes. Then if they are given more information, did you know, these other things, they immediately switch and so that the no vote does prevail. But it takes that information. Consequently, we're trying to get out early. So the people have this and they're not caught off guard when they get a ballot and hear near the end of it, actually, all the judges come after it, but shall there be a constitutional convention? I don't know. I just picked a congressman and, you know, all these legislators. So just trying to inform people ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now move on to item number sixteen. Agenda item LUC twenty twenty, twenty-two zero five zero seven, Girdwood Chamber of Commerce request for GBOS resolution of support for a request that HLB amend or cancel the RFP or the Holton Hills project. Is anyone online to talk to us?
Yeah, hi Mike, this is Patty and Linay is also online, so we can really quick talk to this.
Please go ahead.
Okay. So thank you very much for allowing us this time. And the main objective that the Girdwood Chamber is putting this forward is to try to get the, the conversation going through the LUC and the GBOS. We were approached by some, and I'll just back, backdate for those, or backtalk for those who don't know, we were approached by some community members to take a look at this as a board of directors. Our board of directors at that time decided to, they wanted to hear from our business members. We held two, two very long meetings to discuss the resolution. We did make some changes to it, more, more from we want to see amended. And if they can't amend some of the stuff from having a studies, and it says it right at the beginning, in order to advance the policies of increasing the workforce, which is what we're greatly concerned by. In our meetings, it was very, very well represented by the businesses. And those who could not come actually provided letters of support, which I think is also part of this package, if I'm correct, was, it was with the LUC. I'm assuming it's with HLB. The main objective with this is that we are asking, again, very similar to what Kathy said, this is, this is not the whole resolution. We're, you know, putting it up as a proposed and, and you would make changes. And it is, the main objective is to get the conversation going because we are greatly concerned that of the, we do not have employees in the valley to work in our businesses. We're concerned with Holton Hills coming online and exasperating the problem of the second homes and making it even worse. And the mere fact that there's people, teachers, others that can't even live in the valley and work because the, the cost of homes are so expensive. And, and we just want the conversation started. We want HLB to hear us and we're bringing it through to the GBOS. Is there any, I can answer any questions or, and there's a number of other members on board who can answer questions, too.
Thank you. Ask the board members, do you have any further questions or comments? Guys about to ask a question. Okay. I asked a question at LUC and I'm going to try and rephrase it and ask a clearer question. So there's a particular, although we don't have all the details, and that's part of the problem, there is, there is a proposal out there now. Is your core concern that that proposal is, is your core concern that there's, there are things that are actually wrong with that proposal directly? Or is it that there are better ways of doing this and things which actually address the most important problems we have in front of us?
Okay, I'll try to answer that. And I remember you asking the same thing in the LUC. And the main thing was, is that because this was mostly a land sale, that there, this proposal was not addressing the actual needs of the community, nor was, nor has a study been done according to the work plan, the HLB work plan, to determine how selling off one hundred and fifty acres worth of land is going to impact Girdwood. So we do feel it is flawed going in, but we would like to see an amendments to it at the very, you know, at the very least. And if they can't make the amendments to make some changes, we'd like to see it canceled.
Okay, great. So I guess the answer is both then?
Pardon me?
I think the answer is both points, certainly, or both questions. It's true to both, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board or community members? Not seeing any other questions. Okay, Brooks, please go ahead. Think you're still on mute, Brooks.
You should be there.
All right, here we go.
Here we are. We can hear you now. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to talk to the substance as much since I, the way this process goes, the actual vote is a month out. But I kind of wanted to put it into perspective. And the, you know, one of the reasons this comes forward is because of the position of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors in the municipal structure, which you all are considered to be the representative voice of our community. So somebody like me, you know, might put in letters about, you know, this is bad and this is a terrible RFP and what do you think you people are doing? And they, we tend to be dismissed as, you know, some part of a lunatic fringe or not necessarily representative of the community. But by taking action as an entire board through the process that we have in municipal code, your position will be given or considered to be fairly representative of our entire community. So I think it's important that the board will make a, make a decision and sort of take a stand. You know, personally, I think it should be fairly aggressive. I, I think the, the group of you, you know, when you decide to devote the time to serve on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, the, the underlying motivation is to improve our community. And there's no question that the community would be improved if the supply of housing for people that work in Girdwood could be increased. And this seems like a relatively intractable problem. It's a very difficult problem, but without strong pressure from the community being applied to the municipality, it will not get the attention that it should get. And so as you think about, you know, what you might do over the next month, I guess I would urge you to consider, you know, what, how to improve Girdwood. I mean, that should be a, a prime motivation and to sort of be strong for the community. This is a fairly significant ask, of course, but without making significant asks, you won't get any progress at all. So whether or not this particular request would succeed is not the only thing to consider. It's just, you know, will you be able to impact the municipality and somehow get some improvement in the community when it comes to workforce housing? That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Brooks. Really appreciate the comment. Kaylee, you have your hand up?
I'm just wondering about the time versus the aforementioned land use, GBOS community meeting on the topic. Because we're going to hold that. I was just wondering about. Apologies. I was just wondering about the timing of this in conjunction with the community meeting we were talking about having earlier, or you all were talking about having earlier, about the land use and GBOS community meeting to discuss the Holton Hills. And how that, you know, I mean, I think at that point, we would have a community consensus, at least, or a good, hopefully. Wondering how that times with this letter, that's all.
Yeah, from what we discussed earlier, we would, we're, we're probably going to be scheduling a meeting in the first half or around about the middle of next month. That will be a, a kind of a joint meeting, town hall style meeting on this topic. So when this comes up in front of us again next month, we should have already held that meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Questions? Okay, I'd like to, thank you very much to the chamber for putting this together. And, I mean, obviously, we agree, this is probably one of the most important things facing the community now. And originally, it was being pushed very, with a very aggressive time scale. Reality has intervened, so the time scale is a little bit more realistic. And I know there will be, this, there was a contract put out for a public engagement process throughout the rest of this year and into January next year. So now is a good time for us to sort of solidify what we're really looking for and what concerns we have. So I think this is all very well claimed. So thank you for putting this together.
Thank you for giving us the time to talk, and we encourage you to read the letters that came from the business community and the business leaders in, in Girdwood. And thank you.
This is definitely a topic that's generated a lot of fever from the community. Thank you. We have written reports at the back of the packet. If there are any specific questions that anyone has on that, we can address those, either from the board or from the community. Give people a few more seconds to go on through. Okay, I'm not seeing any, not seeing any questions come up. So in that case, I will see if anyone would be interested in the motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn, Spreana.
Thanks, Spreana. Second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Everyone was rushing for second. Thanks, everybody. We are now adjourned. And thank you for, to everybody for participating tonight. It was a very productive meeting.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Mike.